Good morning. Call the order of this meeting of the September 4th, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, September 6th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Please take time to silence your electronic devices.
Thank you very much. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item.
Item one is the public hearing on and consideration of possible revisions to the fiscal year 2019-20 approved recommended budget.
Mr. Gill.
Mr. Ferguson is going to have a brief presentation.
Great. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the board. I'm Britt Ferguson, the county's chief fiscal officer. As your board knows, on June 11th, your board approved the fiscal year 2019-20 recommended budget, which provides appropriation authority for all county departments until the budget is adopted. That approved budget, excuse me, totaled $4.4 billion in appropriations for all funds and $1.8 billion for the general fund. I'm here this morning to provide an overview of our proposed revisions to the approved budget, which generally reflect the impact of new information available after the county's fiscal year 18-19 books were closed in late July. We had new fund balance and other information. In summary, we are proposing a net total $138.1 million increase in appropriations, mostly in non-general fund budgets. That includes a $120.7 million increase in appropriations to cover the rebudgeting of additional fund balance carryforward and revenue for expenditures on capital projects, equipment purchases, and contracts that were expected to take place in fiscal year 18-19, but were delayed for a variety of reasons. Almost half of this rebudgeting is related to capital projects in the airport funds. In addition, our recommended revisions include $17.4 million increase in appropriations to cover certain other changes, such as the receipt of increased or decreased revenue for various programs, changes in state mandated funding requirements, or appropriation adjustments approved by the board after July 1st. Almost all of the increase here is in non-general fund departments, with the largest being a $10 million increase in the airports budget to fund the purchase of new buses. Given the fiscal risk factors that were discussed by the board at June budget hearings and that the county is facing, in the general fund and realignment funds, almost all additional discretionary and realignment resources are being used to augment reserves. This includes an $8.6 million increase in general reserves, a $2.6 million increase in the general fund's audit report payback future litigation reserve, the establishment of a $2.6 million protective services realignment reserve, and the establishment of an $11.8 million social services realignment reserve. These reserves will provide a hedge against possible revenue reductions, particularly in the realignment funds, and will help address a number of risk factors that, again, were discussed in June, but I'll just recap here briefly for your board, and you're well aware of them. The first is the potential end of the foster care Title IV waiver. That waiver is currently scheduled to end on September 30th, 2019, the end of this month. Unless it is extended by Congress and the president, it is looking increasingly unlikely that the waiver in its current form will be extended, though there are a number of efforts in Congress to provide some short-term assistance or relief to states and counties participating in the waiver. At this point, it is unclear whether any of those efforts will be successful. If the waiver ends without any federal or state relief, the county will experience a $21 million revenue reduction in 2019-20 and an ongoing annual revenue reduction of approximately $29 million. Both protective services and social services realignment, where we're, again, proposing to establish reserves, that realignment revenue can be spent on Title IV-related programs. Second risk issue is the potential need to pay a final judgment against the county in the Hardesty-Schneider land use lawsuit if the appeal of the federal court decision is unsuccessful. The existing judgment against the county, as your board knows, is $106.8 million, not including attorney's fees, with a court of appeals decision expected sometime in the next two to three fiscal years. If there is a judgment against the county, the county would have to pay at least half that amount, potentially up to $53 million upfront, and the rest over time. In addition, in order to stay the judgment pending appeal, the district court required the county to post a surety bond for $53.4 million. As one of the conditions for obtaining that bond, the county agreed to put a plan in place to pay off the bond in the event of a final judgment against the county. That plan will likely involve putting aside funds each year in reserve.
Okay, Britt, I'm going to interrupt Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Sorry, Britt, I don't mean to interrupt your flow, but I wanted to catch you when you were explaining the circumstance around the 4E waiver. What I didn't hear you say was if it does not get extended, there is no, you know, bridge funding, so to speak. I didn't hear you explain what we do. Does that just, does that leave us thinking that, and the public thinking that, we just accept that and we accept that hit to our services for foster youth? Because to me, this is really kind of a critical theme for this particular budget is what to do about this. I'd like you to.
Right. It's a good point, Supervisor. So, our plan for this fiscal year, for 1920, is to wait and see what happens. We do have that additional roughly $13 million in reserves set aside, potentially to use to help offset those costs. We also have some general fund reserves that we could use if we need to, but what we really intend to do is sort of monitor things as we go along. As you know, during the year, we often have additional salary savings, additional revenues, and so we tend to monitor that, and our goal is to try and get through this fiscal year being prudent in terms of how we use the resources that we have and work on a plan for how we will phase into dealing with this in fiscal year 2021, whether that will involve continuing to support the waiver with additional realignment or general fund money or other reductions. That's an issue we'll look at as we head into 2021.
And Supervisor Serna, beyond the fiscal component that Britt mentioned, we are engaged in a lobbying effort at the national level and state level to see what kind of relief we can receive. There is a trip that Mr. Wackstaff has planned, going back to Washington DC to see what kind of augmentation we can get.
I'll be on that trip.
Yeah, and of course you. And we are also engaged at the state level in having conversation with Governor Newsom's office that, given the hit to California alone, it's about $350 million that's going to come out of our economy if this is not done. So, the trip back to DC that you and Bruce are going to be on is huge for us. We need to see what we can get. And one thing that Britt mentioned is that if the waiver doesn't survive exactly the way it is, but if they have something else that takes its place, that gets us the same result, we're not really committed to having the exact same format, but it's the programs and the funding that we're seeking on that.
No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that I think we're doing everything we can in terms of advocating with, especially with other California counties that find themselves in similar circumstances. I guess what I'm looking to understand a little bit better is if we were to look kind of at the spectrum of the outcomes here, and if the worst-case outcome is zero, right, that's sort of a $21 million hit. So, I heard you say, Britt, we could consider about $13 million reserves, kind of band-aid it together. In terms of the mechanics of how this board would have to make a decision presumably in public, how would that work? Could it just be a mid-year adjustment?
It will be a mid-year adjustment we will bring back to you to make the reserves available to augment the programs.
Okay, so we do have the ability to, at least in this fiscal year, to kind of not miss a beat here if necessary.
That is our plan.
That's what we're hoping to do. Again, we'll be monitoring overall to see where we are, but typically, as you know, we do have additional salary saves between that and reserves. If we're careful, we hope to be able to get through the fiscal year.
Yeah, I know the board's been, we're in receipt of a letter from the Children's Coalition. I think it would be good for us at some point, not to, in the not-too-distant future, to think carefully about how we communicate, not just the Children's Coalition, but others that have expressed a concern for the 4E waiver challenge about what our plan is that you basically just summarized.
Yes. Supervisor, if I might, thank you for your comments. We should do that. That's a good point, but I wanted just to assure you, we're in regular contact with everybody involved in the waiver, the providers, the advocates and others, on the status and giving them regular updates, but your point's well taken.
No, I think, no, I understand that. I just think maybe we need kind of an umbrella, communicate, put it up on our website, maybe if necessary, to explain what it is that we're preparing for.
Yes, we could do that. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the last point. In fact, that's what I punched up, was to be sure, not only with the Children's Coalition, but we have other advisory bodies that certainly assist this board in, you know, matters related to delivery of human services and whether it be the Children's Coalition, Human Service Coordinating Council, other bodies. I think that beyond advocates and program providers, Bruce, to your point, I think it's imperative. You know, we're looking at a $30 million year-over-year hit, and I appreciate that we have some money set aside in this budget, recommended budget, for our approval and adoption to address this year, at least in part, but, you know, what does that call out for next year, and if it's going to, you know, result in, you know, significant changes, potential reductions, and other things that maybe we don't anticipate at this very moment, I think it's imperative that we utilize those folks who are appointed, who serve us, the community, and I think bring, you know, I think particular expertise in some areas that could assist us as we're looking to see how we're going to cope with all this. So, I guess I would just echo that, and I've heard you say you're going to do that already, but I don't think we utilize oftentimes our advisory bodies as much as we potentially could, and I think in this case, particularly when we're looking at some ratcheting back potentially in areas where we've seen great success in serving children and families, that is going to be crucial to have those folks by our side, at least to understand, you know, they maybe still would be at different points relative to what we had, decisions we are called upon to make. So, I would just encourage us to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. The third risk area, again, your board is very familiar with this, are future costs associated with the May's jail conditions, so confinement litigation, consent decree into which the county recently entered. As you know, under the terms of this consent decree, the county is required to implement six remedial plans that will require additional staffing, contract costs, and capital improvements in the jails. The county has already committed approximately $30 million annually to this effort, and it is expected that the county will need to extend, spend an additional 20 to 30 million or so annually to fully comply with the consent decrees. In addition to that, in addition to those annual operating and capital costs, we will need to pay attorney's fees, which will likely be in the area of about $2 million. So, that, those are the risk factors, among others, but those are the major risk factors that your board is well aware of that led us to the recommendations we have before you today. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions the board may have, and after that, your board, of course, will want to hear any public testimony, and after the conclusion of the public hearing, we are recommending that the board approve the recommended revisions to the approved budget, direct the Department of Personnel Services to prepare an administrative salary resolution to reflect positions approved in the fiscal year 1920 adopted budget. The budget will be coming to you for adoption. Direct the Department of Finance to prepare the fiscal year 1920 budget resolutions for board consideration on Tuesday, September 24th, and then approve the list of new revised projects for inclusion in the county's capital improvement program that are attached to your agenda item. Those are consistent with what is in the revisions to the recommended budget. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Supervisor Frost.
Britt, I wonder if, given the big expenses that we have coming and the potential for posting, well, one surety bond and potentially others to do the capital improvement and so forth on the jails, if there is a larger requirement for reserves associated with the bonding that we're going to have to do, and if that's kind of included in all this?
So, that's a good question. I don't know that there's any sort of technical or legal requirement for additional reserves, but to the extent that we build our reserves, it could allow us to reduce the amount of money that we need to bond for, and in addition, having significant reserves helps us in terms of obtaining a better credit rating on any debt that we might need to issue. As we looked at the budget this year, as you know, it was a balancing act in terms of the reductions that needed to be made in June, what we're doing now in terms of setting aside what we can, looking at the potential for the Title IV loss and all of those factors, taking that all into account. Obviously, as you know, we'd always like to build reserves as much as we can, but we had to balance that against maintaining programs and services, and our long-term goal is to have sort of a spending plan that is sustainable, allows us to have adequate reserves, but we have to sort of build that over time.
Okay, and then I just had a question on the, there's no page number here, but it's talking about rural transit and how we rebudgeted for budget for buses that weren't received. Is that funding that goes to RT for buses in the rural areas, or what is that? Sorry for my ignorance, but I wasn't sure what that was talking about.
You know, I honestly don't know exactly where the money goes, but.
It does not go to RT. It's.
I may back it up. We, in the area outside the RT service area, we have a rural transit service that we certainly act as a pass-through. It's in agreement with, City of Galt provides a good portion of funding for that area. City of Alton participates, I don't think financially, and the buses typically, there are grant monies that we receive through various sources, and we act as a conduit for that because I think we, you know, have the expertise, and so it's by agreement. It includes an agreement with the City of Galt. We fund some of those, but there are pass-through dollars that are designated for those particular purposes, and if there's anything in excess that isn't spent, I believe it does go to RT, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I was just wondering, the funds that were returned to the general fund and ultimately transferred, some were transferred over for animal care. So, basically, that's how we, let's see, it's attachment three, talking about the general fund and the TOT funds that financing transfers and reimbursement, and TOT, $137,162 of unspent funds returned to the general fund. Is that how we finally managed the extra that was needed for animal services, or?
It's not a direct correlation with that. That's just money we had. We look at the whole compilation money that comes in. It's not just from transit, it's from all different funds we have. That money was forwarded back to the general fund, just it went into all the different reserves we have.
Okay, so it was, it was just, is that a general practice, then?
Correct.
The unused TOT goes back to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
If it's not with a certain particular supervisor, if it's supervisor funds, it stays there. If it's not, then it works back to general fund.
Okay, and then I just had a question relating to, it talked about some of the capital improvement, in the capital improvement section about, it mentioned Sylvan Library Refresh. There was no mention about Orangeville, but I'm assuming was the, county was not covering the capital improvements on Orangeville Library. Is that why it was not?
That's not a, that's a lease issue. That's not, yes.
And then the pension obligation seemed lower, way lower than I thought it was. I thought it would, the annual payment on our capital improvement, or on our bond that was paying on our pension, our pension obligation bond, I thought that was like $192 million a year, but it seemed like it was quite a bit less.
I, I'm not sure where you're.
And this, I don't have the number committed, but we are reaching a point where we've hit the maximum we're going to pay on the bonds. It was a 30-year bond, we're 2019, it's going to expire 2034, so we are starting to get to a point now that it's going to gradually start stepping down, and that potentially is what you're seeing.
It seemed like it was significantly less.
Correct. It will, it will start decreasing.
Is that what you, you look like you're.
No, our pension obligation bonds cost due decrease. I'm just not sure what you're looking at to come up with your numbers.
It showed about a $45 million payment.
Yeah, trying to find that page. Let's see. Sorry, everyone.
Well, we could do, we could look into 45 million reduction, and if there's no other questions, we'll research that and come back.
I just, I think I was under the impression, here it is, it's on page B44.
Okay.
And I guess I thought it was around $192 million a year, or $197 million a year, and this is like quite a bit less, so.
Yeah, we will confirm that, but we are getting at that point now that it's going to start decreasing as.
And it pays off by 2028 or something like that?
2028, 2029 in that timeframe.
But that's a fixed cost. It's not an adjustable rate. We have.
It's not, but the way it's set up was amortization schedule is set up where dollar amounts change each year. So, we hit the height of the payment, which I believe is, this was last year, and then as we start paying more principal off, interest cost goes down for us. So, therefore, our payments start decreasing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, I suspect that during public comment, we're going to hear from some folks, some of whom I know I've met with and perhaps others on this board I've met with, that have expressed concerns about county investment in our jail system. And as I mentioned to them during the meetings, I think there's been a little bit of confusion in terms of what we're being asked to do in this budget cycle relative to the main jail and the consent decree versus investment at RCCC. So, maybe to get a little ahead of that and kind of set the stage and make sure everyone has the same understanding of what we're being asked to do. Britt, could you comment on that, please?
Yeah, so, as I mentioned, under the terms of the consent decree, we are required to make various improvements in the operations and in, of our jails, both our jails and in terms of the facilities themselves. The consent decrees allow us to phase those improvements in over a five-to-six-year period. We actually started a couple of years ago with some initial investments. This year, we are bringing that total annual cost up to about $20 million. That includes both ongoing, or $30 million, that includes both ongoing operating improvements, additional staffing, medical care, psychiatric care. Staffing is designed primarily to provide for better conditions for inmates in the jail in terms of additional out-of-cell time and other factors, additional mental health treatment services, and then we're looking at the initial work around designing an additional annex to the main jail that would allow us to establish, dedicate, among other things, dedicated mental health and medical facilities, and a new booking and intake facility that would allow us to comply with the Americans Disabilities Act requirement for some privacy for inmates as they're booked into the jail. So, those are obligations under the consent decree. That will be phased in over.
And Britt, those are also obligations under the law.
That's right. The reason, the reason that we're doing this ultimately is because we determined that we were, that in the end, that we would, that we are required under the Constitution, under the law, to provide services in that way. As your board is also aware, though, we are committed to looking at ways to reduce the population of the jail as well. We have a number of initiatives that the county and the courts have undertaken. Most recently, this budget includes a pre-trial pilot project that we've just learned will be augmented by additional state grant money that we've gotten to look at diverting, hopefully a reasonably significant number of inmates pre-trial from the jails. We have a number of programs designed to release inmates out of the jail early into the community for work release, the sheriff operates, or home detention programs. We have a number of specialty courts that are designed to divert offenders from the jails into drug court, mental health court, and those sorts of things. And so, we're continuing to look at that. We're also looking at other alternatives potentially to incarceration for sentenced offenders that would be both safe and that evidence has proven would be successful in reducing recidivism. Of course, those are all efforts in the works. To the extent that we can reduce the population of the jail, that would mean that we would potentially have to spend less money on some of these remedial plans, and even though there would be a cost to some of that. So, we're looking at it as broadly as we can. Your board has given us that direction in the end. In the end, though, we do have to comply with the law, with the Constitution, and so that's what we're proceeding to recommend in terms of investments. One of the things that, one of the advantages of the consent decree that your board has agreed to is that it does allow us to phase in these improvements. Not only does that mitigate the impact in any one year, but it gives us time to explore these other options and alternatives and do what we can to, in the long run, keep those costs as low as possible, consistent with our obligations under the Constitution and the law.
And thank you for that thorough explanation. What about, what about discretionary spending specifically on RCCC? What are we being asked to consider in this cycle that's separate from the consent decree?
Discretionary spending on the RCCC? So, the budget, as was originally presented back in June, did not include any, anything other than the investments that were part of the remedial plan investments for the RCCC. There is a, also a SB 10 funding that was provided, that the county received a number of years ago to make capital improvements at the RCCC, mostly around programming, medical facilities, not actual housing, and that is still sort of working its way through the process. But there, other than what's required under the remedial plans, we're not putting additional discretionary spending into the RCCC.
Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, Britt, a couple of things, maybe just going back to RCCC, but we are, in the capital budget, there are any number of projects that have been rebudgeted that were certainly in the information presented in June, and I just, I contrast that, and again, I know that you heard certainly from this board member during the June budget hearings, but I remain concerned from a couple of different vantage points, not so much about doing need repairs. These are assets that belong to the people of the county, whether people agree with the services that are provided in any particular realm, maintaining roofs and other critical infrastructure is, it's not just good business, but, you know, we have to preserve those assets. But what I'm concerned about, and this is the contrast, is that both in the parks and library areas, we, year after year, in good years and in bad years, and I understand that there's a, you know, particular circumstance that relates to the parks budget, I'd like you to take a moment to talk about that, but we build reserves for what we anticipate, maybe, you know, some, you know, dark clouds that, you know, are going to bring some pretty stormy times that relates to budget. But this year's budget, that will be announced or approved, contains outsider grant monies, no capital for parks, and it didn't last year, and it didn't the year before. And then I also look at the library, and I guess I'm going to express a little bit of disappointment here, that a year ago, when we were in budget hearings during this time, actually in June of last year, we talked about doing a master plan. I don't know that we've even got a consultant on board, maybe we do, but that, to me, we've lost a whole year of budgeting. Things may get worse, and in the event of that, then it's going to be very difficult for us to, you know, make findings as it relates to how we move money around. And when I think about the folks that we serve with libraries and with parks, in contrast that we're putting into other areas that are capital improvements that are needed, that concerns me. So, I guess if you could take a moment, tell me where we are with the parks, particular budget. budget, and how we might look at capital. And that was a choice that was made 15 years ago, so the historical reference as it relates to that. But if you could take a minute on that, and then I'll add some other points, so.
Sure. On the parks issue, as you know, all county, all departments that operate county-owned facilities are charged a, essentially a 2% facility use charge, and that money is used, among other things, to maintain those buildings. Parks is not, has never been charged, or not, many years been charged that 2% use charge. So that money is not available to be spent on parks. With regard to the library master plan, there have been some delays in moving that forward, but we, we just actually completed interviews, along with the library staff, completed interviews with consultants. Mr. Leonard can address that in more detail, and have identified a consultant to enter into a contract with to move forward on that, on that study.
What's the timeframe? It was a year ago we were going to have a master plan for this year's budget, and now we're going into another budget year.
Supervisor Natale, the, the interviews for the, in the consultant selection process were actually last week. There is a final negotiation of scope with the consultant team that's going to be recommended to the Board of Supervisors to prepare that study. We're looking at about a nine-month period to complete that study. It'll include significant stakeholder and staff participation in, in the process. So we anticipate having the contract to the board in November. We'll also be, library staff will also be advising the, the library authority board.
Well, I'm going to respectfully suggest that we have that master plan prepared for, when we get, consider budget next June. Again, that will have been basically a two-year period to complete something that's very important, and I don't disagree that we need to have a plan for how we're going to spend our money. But it, it just seems to me, and then, you know, we lose to inflation, we lose to the opportunities that may present themselves as it relates to doing some improvements that I think are very, very important, and, and so, and I'm going to, again, respectfully suggest that we have that ready for, so it can be incorporated into our discussion next year.
Couldn't agree more with you. Unfortunately, this thing got delayed. Our whole intent was to have a robust discussion with you this last spring. I would like to have that before we get into any serious budget discussions. Same thing goes with parks with 2%, with them opting out. Can go back on due history, but we are in discussions with parks and Britt on how to bring them online, because there are some assets that need to have further funding and investment made in it. And it's just unfortunate that that decision got made, but we've got to fix that.
So would you anticipate that you would have that piece, the parks, for us to take a look at? Because again, you know, I guess we could incorporate, that's a board decision. I mean, basically, the Parks Department brought it to us back in 2004, three, whenever it was, and asked to be excluded. Again, I don't recall, maybe Susan does, what their particular strategy was there, but nonetheless, you know...
I'm not so sure it was a board decision, because I think that got, I think it got made by the department head. It might have been rolled into the budget. I don't think you took a vote on it.
Okay.
So that's the conversation we're having is how do we rectify? If you need to come to the board, of course, we will come.
Right, right.
But we do need to fix that issue.
Okay. Well, I think it's important, because again, when we look at some of the assets and, you know, just, I know we've had damages with the winter storms last year, we've got other facilities, and, you know, I'll be talking with you and Liz Bellis about one of our community centers that we operate that the roof is in great need of repair. Now, we have some money in operations and maintenance, I understand, but those types of projects, we're going to, you have to come up with a few hundred thousand dollars potentially for those. That's not easy to come out of a general, largely general fund-supported budget like the Parks Department. And so could we also, as a part of that, have maybe a list? I mean, we get this big, long list, they're in the CIP with no funding behind them, but maybe the things are more critical, so we know that we're not losing...
That's part, that's part of the exercise we're going through at this point. We first, for us, was to get an idea, what are the deficits we have in parks capital? I think we have a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
Now we've got to transition into, so what's the most critical one, and how do we augment funding, whatever our options are.
I understand that has to be...
We do want to have that conversation with you when we bring you to CIP next year.
Okay.
I fully expect to have that conversation with you. Library, I would like to have that not as part of the CIP. It should roll into CIP, but in the master plan with the library director and our folks, we should have a conversation about libraries in your district and what's the vision that you all have for that. So unfortunately, you're absolutely right, we're behind, and we need to get, get that library master plan up and running.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. We're looking, going to consult on board here in the next, next month or two. It sounds good. If I could, then, just one other area, and I know in June, you mentioned that we were looking to have a master plan, maybe that's not the right term for it, but for senior and adult services. And this goes back to the conversation that, you know, again, raised in budget a year ago, and we took a look at some money that came through that bought us some capacity, but it goes to a senior safe house and the need, I think, that was at least pointed out, and certainly it continues to be pointed out to me by folks in, you know, in, in the community, and looking, you know, looking at how we're going to deal with that.
Yeah, I'm going to have Mr. Wagstaff talk about it. As you accurately recall, this is one of the initiatives we have, is look at how we provide services to seniors, not just safe house, but overall services. And Bruce, you want to give an update?
So supervisors, you recall at your retreat, we discussed the situation with the rapidly expanding senior population. And so we have been following through over the course of this year with staff work leading up to what we would propose to you potentially at your upcoming retreat, or we can set the actual timeframe for that, for what we recommend that you prioritize in the way of senior services to address this expanding population. As it relates to the specific question of housing, supervisor?
Yeah.
I'm going back to our earlier discussions, we did receive state funding, as you recall, for that.
All right.
Forgetting the actual number, but I'll be happy to come by and give you an update on where that stands and how we're using that funding and what results we've had in terms of expanding housing for seniors. Be happy to do that.
Well, and again, I said we expanded capacity. We got, again, it allows us to temporarily place folks, but it doesn't really provide for, I think that, and again, the comment I think was made last year, well, we don't know if we need another facility, although we know we have two times as many folks. Now, maybe that never has been adjusted, that are able to get in, that in any given night, that was in the staff report a year ago. So maybe the additional monies allowed us then to, although it was for broader population, and I think it had a homeless twist to it as well, which, again, is not unimportant for something that's a senior that's out on the street. But there are folks who are, you know, neglected, abused, mistreated, you know, urgent situations where maybe the caregiver passes away, the, whatever, that aren't necessarily in the homeless realm. And so I guess, Bruce, as we come forward with this, because, again, I'm not saying that, because I don't know whether we need another facility, but I think the numbers that were, you know, pointed out to us, and it was, the money came with a more specific, I think, bent to it, although it could be used a little more broadly. And, and so that's great, that, that helps, you know, some in that population. But as I mentioned just a moment ago, is that there's a broader population that isn't necessarily homeless, or they might be, you know, because of the circumstances that arise, but they need to have safe housing. And while the situations are being assessed and, you know, our adult protective services work on them. So if that's going to come forward in the, in the retreat, fine. I think it's only a broader discussion with the community is important, though.
That's part of our efforts.
And that's part of...
We're having community sessions to get input from them on those issues.
Okay.
That's part of the whole effort.
Okay, thanks. One other area I wanted to ask, let me turn back to Britt here. In the June budget, and I know that the specific situation was addressed, and this goes back to jail medical and the costs, and this goes long before any lawsuit was filed against this county. Certainly, we had discussions from the dais and from staff about rising costs of jail medical. We know we're going to put more in because of consent decree, because of some of the constitutional required things that we're going to have to do there. But I guess my question is, excuse me, is how are we tracking that on, say, a daily basis or a weekly basis? Because the inmate that was referred to in the budget report in June, that was, you know, there was no release date, although Mr. Gill told me that person has been released, where it was going to be a million and $400,000 annually just for that one person's treatment and medication, and we had no release date. So how are we tracking this? Is there a senior executive team that looks at, you know, people, obviously involving law enforcement, district attorney, the sheriff, that's looking at the, the folks that are incarcerated currently and what their medical conditions are, obviously providing treatment under the, you know, the consent decree? But are we, what are we doing? Because that person in the budget was called out, there was no release date, but now since June, he was, he or she was released. And so, you know, that's, I guess that's a savings in one regards, but who's looking at that?
So there is not a, an executive team that is like daily or weekly looking at the population of the jail. We have had a number of meetings over the last year or more with staff from Correctional Health and from the Sheriff's Office to talk about what we're doing to deal with high-cost inmates. And we will continue to have those meetings as we, as, you know, on an ongoing basis. You know, one of the things that the Sheriff's Office and Correctional Health have indicated is that they do make every effort within the confines of what, you know, the charge is and what, what risk factors are to, to get people out who are a significant cost. But obviously, some people can't be let out for a variety of reasons, including, including frankly, their medical condition. So...
Supervisor Natale, if I could just jump in, it's not a high-level executive, but Dr. Beelinson and his folks do look at it. As you know, some folks we can't let out.
Right.
We have to provide the services for them when they're in our custody. We take care of that, and if there are other options that are available, that's when the DA, sheriff, and the judges get engaged. And that's what Britt and his folks have been engaged on with work on the jail side. But I can assure you this much is that the department does look at it, they do pay attention to it. You will get instances where somebody cannot be let out, but they do have a medical condition, and we have to handle the medical condition. And we don't go in it with the mindset, I think you know this, with, with the cost mindset, if there's a medical problem, we have to handle that medical problem.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Nav. Again, you know, this is new information, you know, certainly what you just pointed out, you know, is relative. But I think cost containment is important, and that, you know, when, when we're looking at the, you know, the additional investment that's going to be made on an annual basis as, you know, in large part that's on the medical side, but there is obviously on the correction side. But, you know, we're approaching $50 million annually of general fund dollars, you know, in the current situation with none of those improvements that are, you know, covered under the consent decree, or very few of them. You know, that's going to grow to 75 or 80 million dollars annually. And that's a significant sum, because, again, those general fund dollars and those realignment dollars are precious. They're what we can do for the general population of this county, and I know you all realize that. And so I guess I'm going to offer one other suggestion here, that, again, not to interfere in the business of the sheriff or district attorney or certainly the courts. I think it's important, though, that we maybe have executive level, Dr. Beelinson, again, I have good confidence in his abilities and certainly in looking at the jail medical, but, but I think not just in containing costs, providing, you know, certainly proper care for those that are in custody, but also then looking at ways to rein that in, because otherwise, where we're going with what's explained in your budget letter here, and we all know this exposure, we're going to have, this board and this community have very little capacity to try to address things like the, you know, you know, Title IV waiver going away, or need for other children's services, or try to do something in parks or libraries, because that capacity is going to be absorbed by the sponge across the street that's going to keep taking that money in. So I guess I would ask now, just if we could have, and maybe working with our board chair, to, you know, have a committee that would meet, meet at least maybe monthly, look at those cases, and to see where we can do that. Because again, we talked about some of the alternatives to, you know, pre-trial and so forth. I get all that, but when somebody's incarcerated, and if they're costing us a million and a half dollars a year, a single inmate...
Supervisor Natale, that's just one instance that we had.
I know, but it was...
But Supervisor Natale, we do look at it, and...
Who are you telling? Excuse me. Go ahead.
And we have convened folks from the DA, sheriff, and the judges, and Correctional Health to look at it. You've made this issue known to us. We do have this discussion, we do cost containment. We will continue emphasizing with them, and your point's not lost on us.
I know it's not, Nav.
Supervisor...
Can I just chime in a little bit?
Sure.
Because we, Supervisor Peters and I have been as close as anybody to this because of the negotiations that went forward.
Right.
You know, this county is committed to looking under every rock where we can, without compromising the safety of the public, limit the population in the jail through Prop 47 applications for grants, through the probation department and their proposals, through, and even, you know, the voters have an opportunity through Prop 10 next year that will significantly reduce the pre-trial population there. We've also, we've also, we're also working with an outside firm to really come and do site visits and look at areas in which, at which they have been successful in other states to reduce that population. I mean, reducing the population, the jail hasn't lost on anyone, is a, is a strong motivating factor for what's going on over there. Now, clearly, we, you know, have to do so. We, we can't control what the sheriff does, but there are ways that a variety of departments, including mental health, including physical health, including probation, are really delving in and looking at all grant possibilities and programs to really bring the jail population down.
And Supervisor Natale, there is a meeting that happens every month, and all the different folks that I mentioned do meet, and Correctional Health is a piece to look at. But as Supervisor Candy said, we do look at all the other options, what are the grants, early release, probation. And there's a proposal we're going to be bringing back to you by some grants that the courts were, courts were able to get that help with some of the jail population. So stuff is coming back to you. And your point's not lost on it. We do look at it. I can't emphasize enough that there are instances that some inmates do cost us more, that's just what happens, but we are committed to looking everywhere for cost-saving and keep public safety in mind.
And I appreciate it.
And I will just add one more thing, that Dr. Beelinson, since he has been here, has made this a strong priority, as far as making sure that these folks get the appropriate care they need, but also that we have a backstop to make sure that money's not being wasted.
Yes. And again, I acknowledge that, and I'm going to commend that, and I would just say one thing, too, that as we look at whatever we're going to, need to, and build in a way of, you know, health facilities that are related to whatever the jail population, you know, is and will be in the future, I think that one of the things we ought to, at least as a consideration, as to what level of hospital services and/or health service we're going to provide. Because I know now that if we have to transport someone to UCD Med Center or to other emergency facilities, to San Joaquin County, wherever it is that they're treated, that we have two officers assigned to that on a 24/7 basis, depending upon, you know, you know, how long they have to be for those treatments. Those are all costs that get built into the medical, you know, treatment protocol. And so if some of that can be done, if we have the capacity, as we do dialysis and a number of other things, you know, and build that in, there may be savings that, or at least there's some offsets that I think we've got to take into consideration, because if those costs then aren't, you know, because we're, you know, outpatienting folks versus doing it in-house, and again, I think, you know, staffing up and having those facilities...
I would say we are looking at that. One of the issues, one of the things we are doing is working with 10 neighboring counties to look at the feasibility. We're looking at a feasibility analysis of some sort of, some sort of regional medical, correctional medical facility, to see if there are ways to do some of that stuff in a more cost-effective way on a regional basis. And there's a study that is being put together to look at that, and involvement by all those counties. The other thing I would note, though, that on the other side, it is true that it does cost staff time to take these inmates to hospitals, but under the, under the new, well, not so new anymore, but the Obamacare system, medic, those inmates who are now in the hospital for more than a day are no longer, the cost of that medical care is no longer the responsibility of county, and we've actually seen a significant reduction in our costs there as they now are covered by, directly by, by Medi-Cal. So there's, there's, there's issues both ways, and we have to look at that carefully.
Okay, and that's important. So those are recoverable costs and/or transferable costs, then all the better, so.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Natale.
Thank you. So I was planning on dovetailing off of Supervisor Natale's earlier comments about, I don't know, 10 minutes ago on the, on the parks. I felt like I'd be remiss, because I mentioned it in June, I think I mentioned it mid-year, I mentioned it in other hearings, that one of the top priorities remains for District One, hardening and fortifying the picnic grounds at Discovery Park. And I know that that is one of the areas that is subject, obviously, to seasonal flooding. But the longer that we wait to, to really make a durable facility there for the public, the longer the existing facility is going to, you know, become that much more unacceptable. So we really want us to make sure we prioritize that, and whether it's through some process of... of prioritization later in the year relative to parks, that's fine. But again, I'd be remiss if I didn't put on the record my desire to see that done sooner rather than later.
Superintendent Serna, you, the work we're doing on prioritizations on the side, June, we committed to look at those structures, that has a higher precedent for all the other lists we're compiling at this point.
Great, you heard it here first. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I just have Britten, a clarification, and you had sent out a response to a question that I had had about Mental Health Services Act. I appreciate that, but just for the record, because, you know, Mental Health Services Act, we all know, is extremely confusing. And if you look at a sheet like this, you can alarm people into thinking that we have this huge stockpile of money sitting aside that we're not spending, but in fact, that is not the case. And that many of the funds that show here as reserves are actually already budgeted for and planned for and part of the program that Dr. Billenson brought forward a few weeks ago. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's right. On August 6th, actually, I believe, you reviewed and approved the Health Services Department's plan to basically spend down a significant portion of the reserves and fund balance in the Mental Health Services Act fund to aggressively implement new programs. And that will be underway. There was some additional fund balance carryforward, mostly because particularly, one big new homeless initiative is getting underway, and of course, takes a while sometimes to get underway, and it was fully budgeted for a year. But that will just be additional money that will be able to be plowed into these plans and efforts to really significantly enhance spending on mental health issues in the community. And as you know, that's one of, that also is one of Dr. Billenson's priorities, and so that money, what, is there now, but it probably won't be there in the next few years as these plans...
And a lot of the, again, I wish they wouldn't use the word reserve, it should be a different word, because it's just misleading to the public, and other than people like yourself who do this for a living. But, you know, some of the, I hear from the providers even out in the community who we, you know, who answer RFPs and so forth, a lot of it is just simply the bandwidth and the ability for them to ramp up quickly, and that's why these things take longer than we think they should, because they have to put physical, you know, capital expenses into place, they have to do training, they have to hire, and, you know, the community, sometimes it's difficult to find that bandwidth.
That's exactly what's been happening, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I do have comments from speakers. Thank you, Britten.
Thanks, Britten.
Robin Blanks-Guster.
Good morning, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors and guests. My name is Robin Blanks-Guster, and I'm an appointed member of the Sacramento Children's Coalition. I'm also a retired nurse. Right now, I'm also a substitute ex-parent educator for the Elk Grove School District, and I'm a member of the Medi-Cal Dental Advisory Board, the First Perinatal Equity Initiative, the Maternal-Child Adolescent and Health Board, and also an ex-Secretary of the SETA Policy Council. I'm here because we are tasked by the Board of Supervisors with providing recommendations on how to better serve the needs of all children in the county. Many of our most vulnerable children populations are acutely dependent on critical allocations from the county in the areas of health services, child protective and other social services, and support for foster youth. I happen to be a mother of five children, 14 grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. I have nephews, one of whom has been in the foster program, and the foster program has done wonders to get him back together with his mom. Particularly prevention and early intervention programs are key in helping children and families before they need the critical services, which are often much more costly and harmful in the long run. This is true, because I had one of my oldest sons, who was also at Stanford Settlement Program. He was there because I had to work nights at the hospital, and it did wonders to keep him on track, and he now works for SMUD. This is one of those things where we really need to keep these programs in place. For this reason, we are here to express our concerns about this 1919-2020 budget and its potential for future impact on crucial services that serve Sacramento's children. We understand that lawsuit settlements have put critical pressures on the county budget, and that these pressures will grow in the years to come. This, along with the expiration of a major funding source for our county's primary prevention and intervention services to children and families, the Title IV waiver demonstration project will result in an estimated $30 million annually in reduced services to the county's foster youth.
Can you wrap up, Robin? Thank you.
The proposed reductions in workforce is going to harm the recent successes that we've had. These hard-won victories could be short-lived if we do not address the loss of prevention and early intervention funds. These losses would have immediate and harmful effects on foster youth and other dependent youth in Sacramento County. Making targeted, data-driven budget decisions is crucial to ensuring child welfare doesn't suffer while creating a feasible budget. For this reason, the Children's Coalition will be monitoring key indicators for children's well-being in this coming fiscal year. We hope that you will join us in our data gathering analysis, and over the next year, to better support targeted decision-making in future budget discussions. We also invite you to attend any of our budget and Sacramento County Coalition children's meetings. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Robin. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So just a follow-up on that commentary, and I'm looking at you, Bruce.
Sure.
I think one thing we might want to consider doing, and perhaps we're already doing it to some extent in preparation for the trip to Washington to speak with key members of Congress on the various bills that are in committee that would give California counties some breathing room here on Title IV waiver, is perhaps collect some real, you know, real-life testimonials from different advocacy groups that explain just how important the Title IV waiver has been.
Right.
And what it means to them in a very practical sense, if it disappears and we don't have any relief. I think having those in pocket would be helpful.
Right.
And I think some of the data that was mentioned might also, you know, help us in our effective advocacy.
If I may, Supervisor, thank you for those comments, and thank you to the Children's Coalition for their comments. But we've done exactly that. We're trying to draw the balance between not having too much information, you know, that can work against you sometimes, but we've put together some very useful testimonials, some very useful data, and things of that nature that I think will very much help us in our arguments. Bear in mind also that so is LA County, so is San Francisco County, so are the other jurisdictions, so is the state of New York, et cetera, et cetera. So it's an all-out effort to try to get relief here, and we certainly recognize the impact, and we're trying to do everything we can to get a good outcome here. Thank you.
Thanks.
Robert Copeland.
The reason why the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors can't spend more money on housing than what Don Tolle wants to do, I think, is because of the, how much money's going to the county Sheriff's Department and the county jail? A lot of those people do not need to be in jail, they can be let on OR, waiting trial. Another point is, you can't give mental services in jail with all that stress. I mean, really? If you let them out on, either on ankle bracelet or some OR-type program, or a work release, they can do their time, or even people that are being convicted, they can do their time, that are non-dangerous ones, not the people that are going to be the hardcore rapists, murderers. They should stay in jail, I believe that. But the non-violent ones can be let out early. And the jail expansion doesn't have to cost so much money. I mean, if you have less inmates, you could do a better job, and the public will still be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Liz Blum.
So, this is our frequently asked question sheet. We, good morning, good to see you all again, and we, I just feel like one thing hasn't been said about the lawsuit, and the information that you provided was accurate, but the lawsuit does not require $150 million to be spent over the next five or six years. It doesn't require any specific amount of money. We are in support of meeting constitutional human rights, and the lawsuit, or Sacramento County was sued not because it was targeted, but because Sacramento County Sheriff's Department was, and is violating human rights. So just to break down where all the money is coming from, so $89 million is coming from SB 1022 to build seven new buildings at the RCCC jail expansion. Does the lawsuit require seven new buildings to be built at the RCCC jail, at the Elk Grove Jail? Does it? I don't believe it does. And then I believe it's eight, over $8 million for the tower that is planned to be built right next door at the downtown jail. I don't see that being required by the lawsuit either. My understanding, thank you, Sue, for explaining this to us, is that in order to meet ADA accessibility requirements in the downtown jail, it's going to decrease the capacity of the downtown jail by 30%. We see that as an opportunity, not to replace that and expand the capacity of the downtown jail, but to take actual tangible steps with community oversight committees that actually address the fact that we can decrease our jail populations here in Sacramento County that does not, like, decrease public safety at all. And when we talk about public safety, are we talking about the safety of people in the jail? Are we talking about the people who are, that's the public as well, it's not just people with money, we're not talking about just that portion of the public. I also want to talk about the fact that when you do other projects in this county, you have, you usually are good about having a process that includes the community on huge projects that are going to affect our lives, our brothers' and sisters' lives, our, everyone in our community's lives. And we have not seen any community engagement for this jail expansion and this, these decisions being made. So regarding the pretrial release pilots and all of those alternatives that you've been discussing, that you've been claiming that you're doing, I don't believe that it's actually effective to have just the only people on your committee to be the Sheriff's Department and the Department of Corrections. We need other people in the community represented on those committees.
Rap, Liz.
Yeah. So we need to address the root causes and the systemic drivers of this incarceration. And if we do choose, if you all do choose to move forward with this jail expansion plan, which again, is not required explicitly by the lawsuit, the lawsuit actually recommends a decrease in jail populations. This is an emergency, this is a public health crisis. We need to take tangible steps to decrease our jail populations here in Sacramento County.
I'm Lillian Glambin with On Track Program Resources. We're technical assistance providers with a specialization in culturally competent behavioral health services. I also served on the Ad Hoc Committee under the MHSA Cultural Competence Committee, and was involved with the, what has led to the African-American Trauma-Informed Line Item. And I'm here because, I got an email yesterday that the September MHSA Steering Committee meeting is going to be canceled, and there were things I wanted to say there. I didn't know last night I was going to come here, but something came into my heart, and I'm glad that I did, because there's some tie-ins. One of the reasons why I was hoping there was going to be this meeting is, at the last Steering Committee meeting, there was this mumbling around the innovations project, and it sounds like, if one can infer, and I looked at the last, your last meeting with Billenson, Dr. Billenson making his presentation, that it looks like there's going to be one innovations project that has, it's been kind of, it seems a little secret, and it sounds like it intends to be with law enforcement and around reentry populations. Again, it's been very vague as to how it's been communicated. I just want to remind everyone that MHSA dollars, by statute, need to have community stakeholder engagement. And before this innovations project, which is a part of MHSA funds, I'm looking forward, and many of us, my reaction is not alone, many of us that were at that last meeting was like, what's going on here? It feels like the innovations opportunity has been taken off the table, there are closed-door conversations deciding how this is going to go. And that's not the spirit of MHSA. So I'm hoping that with the board's involvement, that to see that is addressed. Also, I just wanted to clarify, there's a comment that I made at the very first meeting that Ryan Quist, new Behavioral Health Director, was at, that I've heard has been taken a little out of context. I had said to, for the African-American Line Item, to incentivize collaboration. I meant, what I meant by that was with the unspent funds under PEI, and again, innovations, which seems to be, I don't know if it's still an option, again, I hope whatever that innovations plan is, I hope that part of that plan is going to involve community organizations, because if you're talking about a reentry population that has close to 40% African-American, that how could it possibly be innovative if it does not involve community partners? And when it comes to the $600,000, so grateful, I know it's more than has ever been allocated in this way, very grateful, but there is a one-time opportunity here with these unspent funds to add to that. And I think Billenson had talked about, what did he call it, service capital, I think was the term he used at the last meeting. There's an opportunity with that service capital to join with the $600,000 so that community partners can partner with the county, to collaborate with each other. You know, I can think of a couple of groups that could take that $600,000, and it would be just, but in order to allow us really to work together with the county, to use that unspent dollars in this rare, unique opportunity. So that's pretty much it. And I do want to make this one last comment, and I will, since, again, no coincidence, I am friendly with someone who has been a lifer at San Quentin. He was released after 33 years here in Sacramento County. He was violated on his parole and spent nine weeks, not nine days, in the county jail. He said it was the singular most traumatic experience of his life. And I just want to put before you all that a lifer from San Quentin saying that his experience here in the county jail was one of the most dehumanizing experiences that seemed intentionally designed to break his spirit. That's coming from a San Quentin lifer. I'm just, just put that in context. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And again, yeah, yeah. Could we not shout it? You got your card, and you'll have your chance. Key and Bliss, please.
I need help understanding something here, Sacramento County Board. So this county budget... So, this county budget somehow, some way manages to find $188 million in funding to increase, you know, the sheriff's jail corrections budget, while at the same time you've seen fit to increase Sacramento County Sheriff Scott Jones's budget, his operating budget, from 500, over 500 million to 542 million, despite the fact that not only does he openly flout county laws and your authority, as he did last year when he forced, like, where he illegally removed the inspector general, like, appointed to provide oversight of his department, but you see, like, and you also agreed and told the public that you would amend that agreement, or a memorandum of understanding, or what have you, so that he could never do that again. Yet here we are, almost a year to that day, and we're still nowhere near having an agreement? Am I supposed to understand that correctly? And not only are we nowhere near that agreement, you've agreed to increase his budget? Let's be real about something here. I have talked with numerous members of county, of county government, and city government. I have heard it up and down, there is no love lost for this man, and yet you see fit to give him more than $500 million and increase his budget, while at the same time asking taxpayers to fund an expansion of the county jail, despite the fact that it is a, how much of a monument of oppression, to oppression that that is? I've been in the jail, I was, I was one of the five people that was arrested last year at the height of the protest against the district attorney, and SAC PD, and county sheriffs. And I've seen firsthand those squalid conditions that the sheriff's department forces people in. 16, over 16 to 20 people scrambled in a jail cell about 12 to 16 feet, alongside rotting food and soiled bath toilets, with only one sink, so corroded and disgusting that you can literally taste the metal and copper that comes out of that water. Barely any, like, any phone time whatsoever, any time out of those jails. This isn't a hard decision. You have money all over this county that you could be taking from, instead of from key mental health and childcare services. You're literally cutting basic social safety nets to fund that monument to oppression and that racist fascist sheriff, who has no respect for your authority, much less the will of the voters, of which, if I need to remind everyone here, he only represents 145,000 people. That's how many people voted for him, out of 1.5 million.
Can you wrap up?
Make the right decision, show us that you actually have some backbone, and that you control the power of the purse, that you have authority, oversight authority, of this sheriff. Don't reward him for his, like, his absolute disrespect for our authority, we the people. Take that money, if you're going to need to comply with this dissent decree, you can afford to take $150 million out of his budget. Period.
Thank you.
And please replace your county executives, they don't really care about people, they scare about them.
Nikki Jones.
Yeah, just, thank you Supervisor Natale Serna for asking some of those questions about parks, about libraries. These are the services that we need in our communities, mental health services, we're gonna, we're gonna need these in the long run. Our communities need them now, and the idea that we're inflating correctional budget, really outside of the requirement of this lawsuit, right? We're very concerned about this lawsuit, of course, but we're more concerned about the jail expansion that's happening separate from the lawsuit. And Natale, I just wanted to mention to you, today at noon, at the Broadway Public Health Meeting, the jail health head of Correctional Health Services is going to be giving a presentation on jail health. So if you are interested in those intersections, please come out. Everybody. So, you know, our concern is that, is not that you are trying to meet the constitutional needs of the people inside the jail, it's that for all these years, the sheriff and y'all haven't been. That's what this speaks to. It speaks to the fact that probably since it existed, this jail has been violating the rights of the people inside of it, and that's just not okay. And we also know that the lawsuit recommends that the best way, like Liz said, there's no money, that the lawsuit says, the best way to meet the terms of the lawsuit is to reduce jail populations. Y'all have a really, really meaningful opportunity to reduce jail populations with this 30% decrease, and instead, instead, like Keon says, we're building this man a new tower? We're expanding the sponge? How much? This new tower, I get it, I get it. We need, we need to have more, 40 more outpatient intensive, or inpatient intensive units in the jail, right? How about 30 more for behavioral health? How about 40 more at Schmidt? We need those in our community, we do not need those under incarceration inside these cages. No amount of money will make these not cages. These people need out, they need care. These people need care before they ever get to this place. And if we continue to fund the way that we're funding, their, our, our services are going to be depleted to the point, and we're already almost there. I mean, look at homeless services, y'all throw homeless service money at the police. It's, it's as if we don't have any answer to social or health problems except this criminal justice arm. And that's a hammer, and it's not going to work because we're not nails, we're humans. Okay? We need some, we need real assistance, real care, and we need real investment in our communities, which is not happening in this 1920 budget.
Thank you, Nikki. Mackenzie Wilson.
So we have this really cool group chat for folks that couldn't be here today. And so I'm going to just go ahead and share a little bit of what they're saying to what you guys are saying, to what we're saying, let's just talk about it. So, again, another opportunity to ask why $9 million in the general fund is going into the jail instead of going into the 4E waiver, which gives SAC County millions each year to support child welfare. We're literally prioritizing jail expansion over children who are most at risk. Five children died last year, as reported by Child Protective Services Review Panel. Uh, let's keep going, 30 million loss in child welfare funds for SAC County if the Title 4E waiver isn't renewed. Come on, you guys, let's get this going. That Title 4E federal funding is going away, and it's, and this is, you guys for those testimonials, it's already impacting foster youth services, as several have already had to close and consolidate this year in Sacramento. Someone should also ask, does the board know how many people have died in the jail this year and why? There's no transparency in oversight when this happens. It happens under CPS when children die, so why not at the jails? We've got an entire fact sheet on the settlement agreement that we would like for y'all to We're afraid, so people are saying that they're afraid that you guys are just flexing, just to show for the cameras that you're worried about these cuts. But there's, at the end of this, you're still going to vote on them just to keep up the status quo. So there's a million, there's a couple of people watching that. This discussion about reducing, it lacks specifics. There's no transparency about how you're going to target, about how you're going to target or reduce population. Natale, you have been getting tapped, man. You are rocking it, calling it a sponge, that's exactly what it is. It's a funding drain. Another talking point, Contra Costa County has 1.1 million people and a jail population of 1,200. Why do we have a population of 1.6 million, yet we're looking at almost 4,000? Funny that no one has enumerated or quantified the problem of 3,600 people in the jail. People are screaming, no more institutions. People are saying that the mindset here is so messed up, that they don't get that institutional incarceration in any form is still incarceration, you guys. Let's keep going. Oh, I'm not going to read those stuff, that's a little private. But long story short, we did answer your misleading frequently asked questions. You tried to call yourself targeted. Hold yourselves responsible for what it is that you have allowed to happen inside of your county. Say out loud, we messed up. We have been allowing people to die and live in uninhabitable conditions and have their rights violated for years. It took you two years just to settle this lawsuit. So people sat there for two years going through this while you did it. Hold yourselves accountable for what you have allowed to happen? And there's an entire group of people here that want to work with you in coming up with alternatives to an expansion. I think that if we had sat down and been talking about other alternatives to an expansion, we wouldn't be calling you out so hard. If you guys are willing to sit down and talk about alternatives instead of possibly voting on this today, you should not be giving $8 million to a new tower.
Dark tower.
That's what we're calling it, and trust me, we're going to paint it as such.
Can you wrap up?
I can. I'm just hoping that you guys will put a pause on this meeting today. I hope that you're going to put a pause on this budget. I'm hoping that you're not going to vote yes and upkeep the status quo, because there are so many people who are terrified that you're going to.
Thank you. Ava Nadal.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Mr. Kennedy, how are you? We work together. If you remember me, Curtis Park, Senior Development, when the seniors getting, almost getting their evictions last year. I was the state representative for Alliance for California Community Empowerment, also National for Center for Public Democracy. Watching the housing crisis, I expected to see the homeless grow. May 1st, I was on a way to orientation to become a childcare provider, because there's a lack of, and, my God, we have no childcare. So, I'm an early childhood major, I'm married 43 years to my husband, who once worked at the SAC County Jail for a short, brief period, because he could not stomach the way the inmates were being treated. And with compassion and morals, it was impossible to continue to work there. 1995, I was 39 years old, I'll be 64 years old this year. I have seven silent illnesses, but that's in hands of Scott Jones jail, right there, 651 last year, I was arrested and charged with lynching after a six-car pilot that I was a victim of, with two of my children in the car. My children were handcuffed to beds, told their parents were crazy, as I, who a male fourth of 1995, was attacked by my client off her psych meds. She didn't mean to hurt me, but she only knocked me back, and now I have spinal sedosis, bipolar, I have seven silent illnesses, and I walked in here and I had a wheelchair. Because most everybody, my comrades around this country know I marched for tens of thousands of people for rights. Changed from segregation to California, be privileged. How privileged is when you watch Keon get arrested the way I did last year on G Street when those, what were they? I thought there were gangsters who arrested him. And I stepped outside on that ground at 5:00 o'clock the next morning, I'm a community activist, not just for myself, I just love people. I work for nothing other than SSI, I am disabled. Okay? I have a husband, I married him 43 years, we got two brain surgeries, a heart attack, and I love my community. Last Friday before last, my son, who has two strikes, was piped line in prison from 13 years old out Elk Grove. He didn't commit a strong-arm robbery, but he got charged with one. 13 years old, with a Harvey waiver. What is a Harvey waiver? My God, we know what that is, don't we? So when you're piped line in prison, I'm an activist for Elk Grove Schultes, and San Juan Schultes, where I was last Monday when American, Real American Monica had a racial problem. Where's Scott Jones? Where's Danielle? Because I know the entire press. So when they call, I come. When somebody's murdered, I put down candles in your city. I've sung at nine gang funerals. Right now, Zelia Anderson's mother had her on the phone. Young man murdered in CB Circle, have him on the phone. I've got three phones, I'm tired of hearing about the death. But more than anything, I'm tired of hearing about that jail. I was charged with lynching after a car accident, and I did nothing. May 11th of 1995, my life changed forever, because the next day I have to be on the PTA board, I got out of jail? What was I doing in jail? Why was I in jail? I don't know why I was in jail, but I know I was knocked down by somebody in that damn hospital at UC Davis, I'd seen it at Kaiser. The next day I know I was in a damn holding cell, over in UC Davis Holding Cell, they went through penal codes, but finally charged me, what was I charged? Lynching. Who did I lynch? I went inside 651 I Street, and I never came back out the same, okay? And I'm very passionate, I will fight the good fight of faith. And so you guys do something about that corrupted penitentiary they got over there. My son was arrested Friday before last with a million-dollar bail on his head, with two strikes, he's out. Guess why? No charges dropped. He could have lost his job. You know how hard it is to find a child when you've got two strikes? I would very tell the guy's son.
Can you wrap up?
Yeah, I'm going to wrap up, but you guys know, know, no more jails. We need schools, we need childcare, we need housing, we need housing, everybody on, you promised me nobody was going to get hurt on that May 1st. Why was that woman's arm broke? Why was Mackenzie and LB arrested? Hey, arresting people, mass incarceration, if we had more blacks right now in jail than we did in slavery in 1830.
Melinda McCracklin.
I don't normally act that way, but I have too much class, I mean, check it out, okay? There was something about SAC County. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Melinda McCracken, and I've lived in Sacramento almost all my life. I was brought up in Del Paso Heights, and I live in Old North Sacramento now, so Mr. Serna, I'm, you're my representative. I've been, I've been financially well-off at times, I have, but most of my life, I've been like most of the other people here, struggling to survive. I dealt with addiction myself, I was addicted to prescription opioids, and kicked that with no help, because there wasn't any help. I, I supported my children, I've had severe mental illness myself, I've had to be hospitalized, and I ended up feeling suicidal from being there, because it's, it's so bad, there's so little help there. There's not enough actual good facilities to take care of us. I could stand, well, sit here, and cite all the statistics, you know, about who's in jail, who shouldn't be. People who are mentally ill, homeless, people who can't afford to make bail. You already know this, you've heard it 100 times. So I would like to talk to you instead about my family, how this affects me and my family. My little grandson was five years old, and he had three cousins who were his constant playmates, his best friends, and their mother had a boyfriend who was a small-time drug dealer, and she happened to be at his house when he got arrested, so she got picked up too. She couldn't afford bail, and so she ended up losing her children, they were put into foster care, and my grandson's heart was broken. And those, can just imagine what those children felt. It isn't necessary. We don't need more people held in jail when they haven't even committed a crime, like she ended up being acquitted, too late. We need, look, your neighborhoods and mine are different, how? In your neighborhoods, you have a minimal police presence, we have more police than we need. You have, however, plenty of resources. When your people in your neighborhoods get mentally ill, they can go to hospitals or treatment centers, there's plenty of resources. My neighborhood, zip. Same thing with, with people who are homeless. You know, if, if we had the resources that you have in your neighborhoods, our people wouldn't be in jail, they'd be getting treatment. I mean, like, in Scandinavia, in those countries, they take a humanitarian approach, they try to rehabilitate people, they try to provide what they need, and therefore, rather than building new additions to their facilities, they're closing them, they're closing whole prisons, you can look it up. You want to spend $86 million of public money to expand the jail? How much do you, how much are you spending on, on social services? You're cutting jobs by attrition, and then you want to spend an additional $2.6 million for social services? Well, that's less than 3% of what you want to spend expanding jails, putting more people in jail who don't belong there, who need help, that you refuse to provide. What is, where are your priorities? Who are you serving? You're not taking care of my family, you're not taking care of my neighbors and my friends, you're punishing them for being poor, for having a lack of resources, which you refuse to provide. And then, you're destabilizing all of our neighborhoods, because our families are being torn apart, are yours. Your families in your neighborhoods can stay together because they have everything they need. What about us?
Melinda, can you, can you wrap up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to know, the people in your neighborhoods, a lot of them, would just assume that poor people didn't exist. assume that poor people didn't exist, or if we do, not to be around where we could infect their property values. Is that what you're concerned about? Is that why you want to put more of us in jail? Because you're supposed to represent us. We are the majority. We are asking you, please, take care of us. Don't punish us for the poverty you have created.
Thank you, Melinda. Thank you, Melinda. I believe I have another card coming down, so I will wait for that. Is another card? Sarah Andrews. That is the last card that I have, so if there's anyone else who has not had an opportunity to speak who would like to, please turn in a card.
So, I don't have anything written, any statistics or anything, but I just have a question for Susan Peters. When you guys put this much money on the line to build more jails and expand the jail, why aren't you lobbying them to build something that's suitable for these kids that are in my neighborhood, that are hanging out on the corner of that children's receiving home, turning tricks every single night? That are having these staff members following these kids around, allowing them to do that, watching them do drugs? I have to have my children watch that and try to teach them the wrongs in that. When I go to the white neighborhoods in your district, because I live in Arden Arcade, when I go to the white neighborhoods in Carmichael and Citrus Heights and those type of things, you show up to those events. I take my kids to those events too. But when we have pop-ups with Black Child Legacy in the Arden Arcade area, I've never seen you there. I've never once seen you there. Why do you show up there, but you don't show up for our kids? Why aren't you lobbying them for this money? Expand for our children. Expand for the unhoused. It's not just a city problem. It's a county problem as well. We have homeless people sleeping right in front of our house half the time. We have to go and give them blankets and food and invite them in. Like, it's ridiculous. Why aren't you lobbying for this? I go and take my dogs on a walk, and people are sleeping right on the sidewalk in your district. It doesn't happen in Carmichael. It doesn't happen in Citrus Heights. They're hidden over there. Because you guys send the sheriffs over there to go and criminalize them. All I'm asking is to lobby for that. There's other ways. You know, in New York, when they have services like this for the children, when they have to unfortunately go in here, they don't have, they don't use it in a private sense. They invest in horseback riding for these kids. They invest in events for these kids. It actually ends up helping them instead of hurting them and putting them in the jails like you guys end up doing. So, why don't you look at that system? Look at other systems instead of voting on this today and invest in our unhoused and our youth.
Thank you. As I said, that is the last card that I have from the public to speak, so we'll bring it back to the board. Is there questions or comments from the board? Mr. Natale?
I just certainly appreciate the comments and testimony here today. Because I wanted to ask Nav and Britt, because it kind of goes to a budgetary matter, but I think to maybe a larger discussion for the community. Britt, you mentioned, and certainly it's been noticed previously, that as we're looking at dealing with matters in the jail, about, you know, potentially a bond issue. I guess I would maybe offer as a consideration, before we get too far down that road, that obviously you've had the offer from folks here in the audience, but others to have a conversation. People may not see the necessity in it, so maybe it could be a different polls or positions. But what I wanted to ask, though, was is that, you know, I think recognizing some of the other needs, some of the other shortcomings that we have, shortfalls relative to facilities. Obviously, staffing's a big part of our budget and support for our, you know, providers that are our partners, and certainly county staff that deliver those services. I'd like to have an opportunity and certainly offer this through the chair, that we have, you know, whether it's a workshop setting or discussion about, you know, some of those areas. If we're going to look to bond, to build, you know, whatever is determined needs to be a part of the jail, and people can determine is expansion or other health facilities or whatever, because all those strategies that we talk about are not going to happen overnight here. I guess I'd like to have a discussion about how this county might advance some of the other needs as relates particularly to facilities. Obviously, we have to find ways to, you know, to either staff them or have community partners. But I'd really like to have that conversation. If we're going to go out, you know, for $100 or $150 million bond, why couldn't we look to have other components as part of that? This county certainly, and again, I certainly wanted to commend some of the leadership here, certainly Mr. Gill and others, as we look to try to work our way out of the budget morass we came through as a result of recession. I guess I'd like to have that conversation and to have a discussion about priorities. And you spoke to earlier Nav, and I appreciate that. You know, we're not going to be able to, you know, buy everything or build everything, but as we're looking to build capacity and to have facilities that serve, you know, a broader community, whether people incarcerated or not, I would like to have a conversation around that. And I would suggest, Mr. Chair, and again, you certainly, you know, hear from my colleagues, I'd like to have a conversation. If we're going to look to try to, you know, figure out how we might pay for something, I would like to have a look at, you know, what else we would need and maybe could build as part of that. And so, I think that's important, and it goes beyond just the focus on jail, on jail capacity, on facilities that are related to the institutions that are, you know, both RCCC and Maine Jail. I'd like to have us have a broader conversation about that. So, I don't know, Nav, if you have any reaction to that or Britt, but it seems to me that we ought to at least have a look at that.
Well, Supervisor Natale, why don't you and I meet with Mr. Gill and his staff and delve down into what that would look like?
Sure.
And we can really put some thoughtfulness into planning some.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Cerna?
Thank you. So, I want to start by thanking the people that took time out of their days to be here and explain what's important to them relative to what I believe is the most important job that we have on a routine basis here at the board as your representatives at the county, and that's the power of the purse, as was mentioned, and what we do to appropriate hundreds of millions, billions in fact, of dollars, tax-grade dollars each year for critical services for this county. And for me, and this has never changed, I look at the budget as a reflection of our values, right? I mean, I think that can be said at any level of government. Maybe others have a different opinion about what budget means to them, but that's what it means to me. And so, I struggle because I believe my job as an elected member of this board is to constantly wed what my constituents tell me is important to them, and I have to balance that with my unconscious. And so, for me, given the last year, the course of events over the last year, and more precisely, the course of events probably over the last four months or so, including the time between recommended budget and today, final budget. We've had some very vocal disagreements. I've had some very vocal disagreements with Sheriff Jones relative to some of his behavior and how it affected the county's ability to have an effective inspector general do his job. We're still without an inspector general. Some will remember that back last fall, I had suggested that we look at some type of instrument that would be a pressure relief valve of sorts in terms of mediation so that this, you know, what we went through last fall doesn't happen again. I've explained that here in these chambers. Some saw me a few weeks ago at a gathering in the Fruit Ridge Pocket area, explaining the same thing. And so, for me, I'm torn because anytime you do anything but affirm a recommended budget, it could be taken on a whole, you know, slate of different ways. One of the ways that it could be taken, I suppose, is that it is somehow not an endorsement of our hard-working men and women in various agencies. But the sheriff's department's different because the sheriff's department has, as its department head, an elected person, right? So, for me, I'm torn. And quite frankly, you know, some of the testimony today really has, you know, affected me. So, one of the things that has not happened between June and today is that the instrument that I've mentioned, a way to have that pressure relief, has been with the sheriff's department, with the sheriff, for months now in the form of an MOU that spells out a specific way to ensure we don't have the kind of tension that we experienced last fall with the IG. And I have not heard anything. I've not heard anything back from the sheriff. I've not heard anything back from the CEO. I've not heard anything back from the Deputy Sheriff's Association. That's their prerogative. I did what I said I would do, what I committed to the public, what was made in the form of a friendly amendment to a motion. I followed through. So, I don't have, I'm left in the dark relative to that. There have been other things, too. There have been policies exercised by the sheriff in terms of a very liberal carry and conceal weapon protocol that I don't agree with, that impacts our budget as well. And so, for these reasons, I am going to be issuing a protest no vote on the sheriff's budget this year. But I wanted to make it very clear why, okay? I want to make it very clear why I'm doing that. Because I am feeling like, and it's true, the only authority this board really has relative to that other county-wide elected person, the sheriff, is the power of the purse. And it's not a reflection on not wanting to provide resources for our sheriff deputies. It's not to not provide resources for what our responsibilities are in terms of protecting the public. But quite frankly, I'll be very candid, it's to send a message, right? It's to send a message. So, I want the record to reflect that I'm supportive of the entirety of the rest of the budget with the exception of the sheriff's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Cerna. And one of the benefits of budget hearings is that you don't have to worry about going off agenda because everything's on the agenda.
That's true.
So, I will address that because I perhaps have been remiss. I thought that the board was up to date on where the OIG is. I will state that now. You did draft, and I appreciate the work that you put into an MOU. The board's will was then for me to negotiate, discuss it with the sheriff, which I did. What was agreed upon is virtually almost identical to what you had drafted and written. That's been done. The intention was to bring it forward when we bring forward the contract for the, because I thought it sent a message that at the same time we're approving an OIG, we are going to make sure that virtually the same meeting, we are going to approve the MOU to send the message that this time, that won't happen again. So, that's where that's at.
It's good to hear, but with all due respect, should have happened months ago.
No, it did happen months ago.
I should have known about it months ago.
Okay, okay. I told you, I was remiss in perhaps not communicating. I was remiss perhaps in not communicating that to you. I thought it was done through staff. I apologize. If y'all can just, thank you. That's number one. Number two, we did hold, we did an RFP for an OIG. We got one response. We interviewed that candidate, and it was agreed from the parties that the candidate was from the Bay Area, lived in the Bay Area, had no contacts with this community whatsoever, that that was not appropriate, and that wasn't what the community would come to expect from an OIG. I think that the person who has, the person or firm or people who play the role of OIG should be rooted in our community and be familiar with our community. So, that applicant was rejected, even though they were qualified in a number of ways professionally. I really believe this has to be a community-based position. For example, Chief Brazil spent years in this community, working in all aspects of this community, and had, you know, some trust within the community, whereas someone who's just coming in from nowhere, not necessarily. So, we did reject that candidate. I then instructed Mr. Gill, instead of just going through the RFP process, to actually get a headhunter, to go out there and just uncover every stone until we could find somebody who was good. We're in the process of doing that right now. I fully intend to have an OIG in place in the next three months. So, that's where that's at. It has taken longer than expected, but I'd rather do it right than do it fast. So, that I'll put, I'll just address that at that point. Is there any other questions or comments of the board?
Mr. Chair, just appreciate the updates, certainly in this setting. I want to be sure that that budget, the budget fully funds what would be anticipated, the cost of that position, and gives a sufficient budget for an OIG for what, for that nine-month period, if that's what it's going to be, or be at least about a six-month, seven-month period, so.
It fully funds it for the whole year.
It does. So, it's fully funded, okay.
And one of the reasons that I was able to convince Mr. Gill that we need to pay for a headhunter to do it, right, is because we've had months without making payments to an OIG, so we're actually saving money in the long run.
Just one other question. So, what are we doing in interim, though, if there are complaints or concerns? I don't want to get too far astray here. So, do we have somebody feeling that on an interim basis?
The OIG? So, no, we're not. I have spoken to, just as a courtesy and because of his experience with Chief Brazil, and his feeling was that, you know, a few months of delay isn't going to make any difference because if there was an incident that were to take place today, it would still take that amount of time to go through the investigation and for the OIG to actually play an official role.
Right. But if I could, I missed that, Gill wants to weigh in, but I just want to say that, but there is another component beyond the incident. There certainly standpoint to have the community, you know, be able to go to an independent body, a person, a firm, and, you know, it could be complaints related to treatment, to other concerns about conditions, wherever they might be, whether it be in one of the jail facilities or elsewhere. And so, I mean, that component, obviously, there's nobody to receive those calls currently.
If we get a complaint, we do have outside firms that be engaged to help with complaints.
Okay. So, we do have some backstop, again, recognizing it's not the adequacy may be, you know, not what we would expect, but at least we're not bare in that regard?
No, we're not. We will have somebody look into it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Natale, for making an argument and a sound argument for the need for a Citizens Oversight Commission. Okay. Is there anyone else that has any issues, questions? Ms. Peters?
Thank you. I just, someone spoke about the Children's Receiving Home, and I wanted to make sure that she knew that we've been having, we have a committee that is working on that. It's made up of the head of Child Protective Services, the head of Behavioral Health, the agency, Mr. Wagstaff, who runs the agency, the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, the Sacramento Police Department, and myself. And...
Okay, please.
Excuse me, I'm giving you my comments. And we, in last year's budget, we set up an arrangement to begin a separate housing for the people who were causing the most trouble. We've worked with Children Receiving Home to get a different kind of accreditation so they can get more people on board and people who are better trained. It's a difficult problem because the receiving home is in the city, and as soon as you cross Auburn Boulevard, it's the county. We've had many complaints from people who own the shopping centers nearby about vandalism and more. And we have, we have...
Excuse me.
Yeah. We've had much better results in the receiving home, but we continue to work on it. In fact, we're getting together in about a week to see how it's gone the last six months and see if we're making any progress. So, that's my, that's my comment about that. And then, if there are no further questions, we can...
Are there any further questions of the board comments? Because we will allow Ms. Peters to make a motion.
Thank you. Okay. I would move to adopt the staff recommendations of the Department of Personnel Services and Finance to revise the FY 1920 budget with the... of Personnel Services and Finance to revise the FY 1920 budget with the following exceptions that Metro Cable has slides for as soon as they get there. Metro Cable, there we go. Okay. And I need a second.
We have a motion and a second for the budget to be adopted with the exclusion of those items that are currently on the screen. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, then I need someone else to move the excluded items to the budget.
I will remove the remainder of the budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Clarification.
With the clarification that Mr. Serna is voting no on the sheriff's budget. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Okay. Thank you very much. I believe we are on to item number two.
Item number two, you are acting as the in-home supportive services public authority. Approve the in-home supportive services public authority fiscal year 2019-20 budget recommended for adoption.
I'll move the item. Oh, you're gonna, you can make a presentation? Sometimes you do and sometimes you don't.
No, he doesn't need to.
Only if you want. I'll second. And might I make a recommendation to next year's chair that we put this poor gentleman first on the budget? We have a motion and a second, please vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
All right, I do have a few cards for off-agenda, which again, whatever that is today, I don't know.
Are we doing capital improvement?
No, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. Is the CIP included in the staff recommendations above, or do you need a separate motion on CIP?
I honestly don't remember if you included it or not. If not, it would probably be a safe bet to include the CIP.
But we did the presentation, but do we need a separate vote?
You do need a separate vote to amend the CIP, unless you included it in your original motion.
Okay. I'll move to adopt staff recommendations for the FY 1920 project changes and new project inclusion, with the exceptions that Metro Cable is going to put on the screen. Need a second?
Second.
Okay. And for clarity, next time, let's separate it out as a separate line.
We should, you're right.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
I need the excluded items.
And I will move those items that were excluded from the previous motion. Motion and a second, please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Okay, now back to members' address, or public address, which some have left. Kaylee Bruni, is it? Okay. I know Robert Copeland left. Robert, if you can hear this, going, going, okay. Shannon Taylor.
Then I have a couple. Are you gonna do more?
Look.
Oh, sorry.
Morning.
My name is Shannon Taylor, and I'm the regional director of operations in Northern California, representing the Telecare Corporation. And at Telecare, we provide behavioral health care services to individuals in Sacramento throughout California and several other states. And we've been doing this since 1965. Telecare has offered a diverse and evolving array of recovery-centered behavioral health programs, and today, I am very proud to introduce the newest addition to the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Pool of Excellence Mental Health Services. And that program is called the ARISE Program. It is one of the programs that was awarded the RFP to serve up to 200 individuals, adults, who may be at risk of or currently experiencing homelessness, who are also justice-involved, and who have been recently discharged from psychiatric acute care settings. The ARISE Program is similar to other Telecare programs, one of which you may be familiar with. It's called SOAR. It stands for Sacramento Outreach Adult Recovery. The ARISE Program is, we like acronyms at Telecare, ARISE stands for Adults Recovering in a Strength-Based Environment. The SOAR Program has been in operation since 2010, and it is currently serving 250 community members with severe and persistent mental health challenges. We're located, the SOAR Program is located in the Arden Arcade area on Fulton Avenue. The ARISE Program, we expect, will be located on 1103 North B Street. That's in District One. And similar to the SOAR Program, we hope to achieve great, we've experienced tremendous success with SOAR. We hope to experience the same with ARISE in helping folks achieve their wellness goals, goals such as obtaining permanent housing, achieving educational success, whatever that looks like for the individual, and then also interpersonal fulfillment, employment, sustainable employment, and also physical wellness and so on. And particularly for me, as a Sacramento native, I graduated from Florin High School, and I also graduated from Sac State. And I realize how the growing need of the unserved, the underserved population, folks with co-occurring disorders, folks with chronic homelessness, folks with a complex physical health and behavioral health needs. This is a needed service, and I am grateful and thrilled that we have the opportunity to serve our community members in this way. The location that we are hopeful to get licensed and obtain all the zoning approval, not my element of expertise, we hope that that will carry out in the next couple of months and with board approval should open early 2020. So January 2020 is the target. And so right now, we're just beginning, well, we want to get the word out. We want folks to know that we are hoping to serve more individuals where they're needed. And so that starts here. We also will be at the city council meeting in a couple of weeks, and then we'll get some mailers out and expect to have an open house in a couple of months to welcome the community and answer any questions you might have, and really just open our space to get ideas and share who we are and the results that we've achieved over the years. And so I've distributed a brochure, and my contact information is there. I've also reached out to Supervisor Serna via email, and I continue, will continue to let the community know that we are grateful to be a part of the recovery process and the behavioral health system. We've had great partners with Sac County, so thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you for being here. Thanks for all your work. And be sure when you look at the location, you look heavily into South Sacramento.
Agreed, yes. Gotcha.
All right. Is that all? Is there anybody, any other questions? I know that we do have one adjournment. We've got another one coming next week that I'm setting aside for a hopefully bigger audience. But are there any other questions of the board before we get to that?
Mr. Chair, just before you did the adjournment, just a note for the record, we got comments that were not on the agenda that came in, so was there any need to further acknowledge those? Came to the clerk's office from...
They've become part of the record.
They were added into the record and they're uploaded and published on the web.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I would like the board to adjourn today in memory of Paul Snyder. Paul had many businesses in Sacramento County and made his fortune selling automobiles, first Chevrolets in the small town of Patterson, followed by having a Volkswagen dealership on Madison Avenue in Sacramento County. He passed away last month at age 92. He was a very successful businessman, and that success allowed him to be a generous philanthropist who helped many others. At its peak, Snyder Enterprises included seven dealerships and over 20 franchises throughout California and Nevada. He consistently was recognized as a top Toyota Motor Sales Dealer in 2011. Toyota awarded him a 40-year sales award for outstanding sales and service in the United States. His entrepreneurial spirit started when he was a youth. He was a beekeeper, and he harvested and sold honey to various retailers, including Tom Railey. He graduated Modesto Junior College, joined the U.S. Maritime Service, and later served in both the Navy and the Army. After military service, he went into the car business, and as they say, the rest was history. He was an avid outdoorsman and donated millions of dollars to international wildlife conservation. He also raised a lot of money for the River Oak Center for Children, the primary charity for decades, for Paul and his wife of 40 years, Renee, who survives him. Their contributions over the years have helped children needing behavioral health and mental health services, and he also supported many other charities. He is survived by his daughter Shelby and son Blake, in addition to Renee. Paul took pride in his businesses, and he used that success to help many others, and I would like the board to adjourn in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will adjourn in the memory of Paul Snyder.